Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, March 18, 2019 at 5:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order and request roll call, please.
Peterson?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Staten?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Thank you. We're all present in the counter for. Public appearances, there are none. Our attorney is tangled up in traffic in Madison, so we're going to jump to the next page and do number five real fast, which is approval minutes, of which there are none. So we've got item six, approval vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, the amount of $461,000, $496.12 for approval.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Questions, please.
Could I abstain from the one, the one payment to Firefly that you guys bought coffee out of petty cash? Or does that-
Yeah, you could just abstain. You're just, we can note that for the record.
Okay. I know, it's not very much, but just so people-
No, you're right.
People know.
Um, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, number, vendor number 3105, General Communications. And again, I just would like clarification on what it is. It says water, and that's a word that-
Supposed to be, should be safety.
Water, safety, warnings, lights. What is that? I'm just looking for a definition. I don't have a problem with the payment.
It could be warning lights on a truck, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's probably for Jeff, and he's not here, right?
Yeah, I can look it up here.
Yeah, we can find it.
$620 is right here. Safety warning lights for new water truck.
There you go.
Water truck, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the water safety was, alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve vouchers, the amount of $461,000, $496.12. Roll call, please.
Glish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes, with a note that I'm not voting on the Firefly payment.
Thank you. That carries. Item seven, community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board tonight?
Uh, Steve?
Seeing no one, we'll go to item eight, proclamations.
Steve, can I just say, I know someone is going to, was planning to come, but it's about agenda item nine C. So if it's alright when they do show up, if we get to that item and they're here, you'll allow them to have some input?
Yeah, that's no problem. Thank you. Okay, so then we'll go to proclamation and announcements. Any board comments? Seeing none, we'll go to item B, staff comments. There's a list of upcoming meetings.
Yeah, and I just, I put something in your, in that plastic folder that I didn't get a chance to put this press release in your packet, but I got this from the fire chief that the, the fire district is celebrating its 125th year service. And they are going to have something, some type of celebration, they'll have announcement next month, but just so you know that.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff, anything at this time? Okay. But item nine A, nine is communication and miscellaneous business. A, discussion of possible action regarding 2019 farm lease between the Village of Oregon and John and Gary Dorfer. Recommended motion is to approve that farm lease between the Village of Oregon and John and Gary Dorfer for Outlot, Outlot one and Outlot two in the Village of Oregon for $150 per acre, and that's all by the bike trail, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So move. I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, this is a, I remember this payment because we do it every year.
Yeah.
And I don't think the price has gone up, has it?
No.
Yeah, it's been the same, so I'm definitely going to support this.
Okay. Anyone else?
They're already leasing it? This is just like a renewal?
Yeah, they've done it a number of, a number of years.
Okay.
Ten, twelve years.
Okay.
It's the farmland that's adjacent to the business park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's actually, it's actually the farmland across the street from the Methodist Church property.
By the bike, by the bike trail there.
Okay. I stand corrected.
By Elfin Parkway?
By Elfin Parkway, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the 2019 farm lease between the Village of Oregon and John and Gary Dorfer for Outlot, Outlot one and two in the Village of Oregon, $150 per acre. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Item B, discussion of possible action, wastewater treatment plan, epoxy coating of floors, buildings 20 and 60. Recommended motion is to approve a contract with executive painting in the amount of $20,135 for floor preparation and repainting in buildings 20 and 60 at the wastewater treatment plant. Funding for this will come from the fund balance in the sewer utility.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. We had information in the packet about this from Cal down, down there also. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. So this is the one, Amanda?
Yeah, um, he thought he'd be here by 5:15. If we could hold off just a little bit for that one, that'd be great.
Just let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, here.
Okay. So we're on item nine C. Hans, I think that's what you're here for, discussion of possible action on the joint traffic study, the Oregon School District. Recommended motion is to approve the task order from Strand Associates for a not-to-exceed amount of $23,500 for traffic analysis at Oregon Middle School and Rome Corner Intermediate School. Funding to be a 50% cost share of the Oregon School District and fund 405 street projects.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. So Hans, we have passed the community input time for speaking, but Amanda said you would be coming to talk about this, and we jumped way ahead because our attorney's not here yet. So would you like to talk about this item?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hans Neldner. I live at West Lincoln Street in the village. Just some comments about this traffic study. I think it's a good idea. I would recommend adding the elementary school to the study. Sometimes the traffic there gets pretty hairy. I also think it's good to get, it would be good to get a baseline of, of measurements because we, we have an awful lot of people driving their kids to school every day, even though we have bus service and kids can walk and stuff like that. And there are a number, I think it's something, rather than tiptoeing around it, we need to, we need to go after stuff like this if we're going to tackle our carbon, carbon dioxide emissions. It's 410.62 parts per million today. And if, if we don't start getting serious about things like this, we're not going to make it in 10 or 15 or 20 years, whatever the, the number is. So that is, that is one reason why I think it shouldn't just be about studying the traffic flow and trying to figure out how to make the, the flow go through the pipes faster. The history of highway engineering in this country is that almost every time when capacity of highways isn't, when highway departments try to solve congestion, they add lanes and people just fill them up all the faster. And it's exactly what you expect when essentially you're confronted, when, when people are confronted with what looks like a free grid. We load up on it, we don't have to pay for it, and we take advantage of it. It's easy to not think about it. I mean, nobody pays anything right now to bring 15 or 20 feet of vehicle every time they come to a school. That's, that's not free. I mean, if you look at the kind of school plannings that, the kind of schools that people lay out right now, no school construction, it's basically constructed on the idea, everybody's going to bring a car, and so you build it way off in the, out in the country. And then you wonder why kids don't walk. Well, it's because if you roll out the red carpet for people to ride in cars, you make it harder for every other mode. I walk a child to school every morning and afternoon to the elementary school, a kindergartner. It's just a few blocks from my house. We've done it, basically every day. There hasn't been any cold day when the school's open that we haven't gone. And at the elementary school, I think if you check with the crossing guards, there are people, there are enough people that behave dangerously or thoughtlessly or just zip through to leave parents concerned about their own kid walking there. And this past winter, it was weeks when the streets from the, you know, from Main Street over to Soden and then to the elementary schools, the streets were perfectly clear and the sidewalks were very slippery. I fell a few times, I didn't get hurt, but that too is an impediment. And again, it's, it's kind of a focus. The village is looking at spending, what, 24, 20, not to exceed $24,000 or something for this study. Well, that money would have shoveled a lot of curb cuts. Didn't happen. It's, it's what you pay attention to ends up being what you don't pay attention to. So anyway, to summarize, I think a study's a good idea to get a baseline, basically get an idea of how many, how many people are driving their kids. I want to make one thing clear because I, I, a lot of people have thought I'm anti-car and I've given them a lot of good reasons to do that. I think driving's fine. There are times when, you know, there are some parents, they really do have a need to drive their kid. If you're taking a kid to a doctor, that's basically what you have to do. There are, there are times you have to drive. But a lot of people are doing it every day. I can tell you that from the elementary. There are a lot of people doing it every day. I thought we had bus service everywhere, or, you know, walking and bus service, so. I also want to make some comments on behalf of another gentleman who couldn't make it here, a new resident of the village. His name is Jeff. He lives on the south end of town, and he's very familiar with the intermediate school. And he said there was a lot of, what he considered dangerous traffic conditions. This was reported in the recent Observer article. It's, it's definitely on the radar, which is great because he, you have a situation there where, where buses, bus drivers couldn't get out with their kids. And if there had been an emergency and someone needed, you know, need to get to the hospital or something, people were double parked all over the place. And I think it's, it's not fun when you live in a small town to, to confront neighbors and to, you know, basically be kind of hard-nosed, but I think that's a necessary thing. People need, definitely get to need the, need to get the message, it isn't okay to basically block off street traffic. So I think that covers everything regard, regarding this study. It's a good idea, and I, I hope it goes well, and I hope you do consider something, some way of just, it just meant I'm getting something like a count at, at the elementary school as well as the, the middle and the intermediate schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Hans. Thanks, Hans, appreciate that. I'll talk to Chief Ull and Mr. Grace about how we want to proceed if we do so. Okay, so we have that motion second on the traffic study by Strand. Are there questions or comments here, anyone?
Do we know if, they're, from what I could read, they're just doing counts of the numbers of cars and going to recommend, you know, looking for peaks and things like that, but they're not actually going to talk to drivers and, and see-
No.
-reasons for driving kids to school or anything like that.
Truly calling vehicles.
Statistic kind of, okay. Alright.
Anything else? Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the task order from Strand Associates for a not-to-exceed amount of $23,500 for traffic analysis, Oregon Middle School and Rome Corners Intermediate School. Funding to be 50% with the school district and fund 405 street projects. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Excuse me, what are you, are you here for a, a specific, specific agenda item?
The planning commission item.
Okay, okay. We bypassed some things. It was just waiting for something we're going to come back to, so, okay. Okay, item D, discussion of possible action, Jefferson Northborough project, final payment. Recommended motion, approve change order number three, an application for payment number five, final for the total amount of $54,926.12 payable to Badge Land. Badge Land excavating. Funding for this final payment is out of Sewer and Water Utilities under 2017 borrowing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions here, comments? This wraps up Jefferson Street, it sounds like. It was a holding of the final payment for one year to be sure things are all okay, which we have, so. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Item E, discussion of possible action, John Deere 1585 mower, scheduled change out. Recommended motion, approve the purchase of a 2019 John Deere 1585 mower and appurtenances from Sloan Implement for the amount of $24,853.74. Funding from Fund 414 under Budget of Park Equipment and 2019 borrowing.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
I wish Jeff was here so I could ask him about his use of the word appurtenances.
That's a big word for Jeff, I wonder about that.
Actually, when we approved the agenda, we were going to remove that candy in me, but we decided to leave it in there. She actually struck it and put it in something else.
Tell them, George, the board, the board got it.
She really did. I left, I left it in there. I'll tell them that you guys were impressed.
Yeah.
So Hans, we don't normally recognize during discussion for the board from the audience, but I will let you go ahead.
Okay.
Let's real quick, one minute.
I would recommend the board take a look at what's available in electric. I think things are getting pretty close on electric equipment being available, and I think at minimum it should be on your radar. Maybe, maybe it's cross prohibitive yet at this time, but, but I do know that like some municipalities in the country, especially where they have a lot of air pollution problems, are moving rapidly to electrical equipment, and it's working for them.
Thank you. We'll pass that along to Mr. Row.
Yep, I've been talking to Jeff.
You can take a look at, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, so any questions, comments on this item? So we have the motion second to purchase a 2019 John Deere mower and appurtenances. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item F, discussion of possible action about the Pro Plow FX blade procurement. Recommended motion, approve the purchase of a Pro Plow FX Flex 6.0 blade and hydraulic connections from Kelby Brothers Equipment for the amount of $5,257.93. Funding from Fund 414 and under Public Works Miscellaneous Equipment in 2018 borrowing.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments, anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item G, discussion of possible action, snow and light material scoop bucket. Recommended motion, approve the purchase of a snow and light material scoop bucket from Midstate Equipment for the amount of $1,085. Funding from Fund 414 under Public Works Miscellaneous Equipment in 2018 borrowing.
I'll move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
See, I would just keep going.
Okay.
Yeah.
So item H, schedule of new library building projects.
And this is just informational item. We wanted to make sure you're aware that there's a lot of, a lot of effort going on to include community input in our planning sessions. So the first thing you have in your packet is a poster for a community input open house. That's going to be Monday, April 8th. It'll start at 5:30 and it'll continue until 8:30. So people can either come at 5:30 for a brief presentation, or they can drop in anytime during the night to have their voices heard. Anybody who can attend, we have a number of other ways that people are being invited to share their feedback. One is contacting me directly, but we also have a feedback form that we have on our website and that we'll be having at the open house, and we have at the library as well. So people, we're compiling those comments to document those feedback, concern, and ideas that people are providing to us. I'm going to go on to the next schedule, which is a table that you have in your, your packet. I just want to highlight a couple other key dates. On Wednesday night, this week Wednesday, we are also hosting a neighborhood input session where we've invited the people, we've specifically reached out to the people that live on the, the new library block, and then the people that live on the, the street immediately across from that, trying to get as much feedback and concerns from the neighborhood to get all those considerations out in the open before we begin design. Doesn't mean we're going to necessarily be able to address everything 100%, but at least those concerns will be voiced and can be considered when we do begin our design. So that'll be Wednesday night. Anyone here who's properly noticed it, so if anybody here wants to come to listen to those, that feedback, you're welcome to do that. Also, just again, the, on the April 8th, we'll also be having a lot of staff input sessions, and then of course, that community input session in the evening. There's a lot of, of work going on behind the scenes. We had a, a meeting with the village planning staff with Jeff Rao, Mike Slavney, Mike Grace, the fire chief, a number of people. So we're really trying to get everything in a row, and so you can just kind of see there's a lot of work going on as we move forward. But just wanted to let you know that there's lots of pieces. On April 10th, we will also be holding special input sessions for specific groups. So for example, the chamber, the chamber staff and board will be having an input session. We'll be having one for homeschool families, teens at the youth center, just variety of audiences, one for the senior, seniors and the senior center staff. So just a variety of audiences that might have specific perspectives that might help guide our design and might give us ideas that we might not otherwise think of on our own. I guess if you have any questions, but otherwise, it's just an informational handout, so you know we're trying to get as much feedback as possible.
Are there questions or comments?
Thank you.
I, I would say that's a very impressive list of meetings for input. We appreciate that. That's a great way to go, yeah.
Are you also advertising these on public, like, social media?
Yes, so the, it is posted on the library's Facebook page and website, and we're, we're personally inviting lots of people and using all the different channels. So if you have a suggestion for a channel that you think we should use, please let me know. Hoping it's already on our list, but you might think of something that we missed, so, okay.
Anything else? Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, item I, discussion of possible action regarding proclamation honoring National Library Week, April 7th through 13th, 2019. Recommended motion is to approve that proclamation. So should we read it first? Everybody have it on the screen, we'll go around like we have. I think that gets everybody involved and lets people know that everybody supports the library, so.
And our, our community session happens to be during National Library Week, so what better way to celebrate than come to say what you'd like to see in your new building?
Okay, so the proclamation is for National Library Week, April 7th through 13th. Whereas today's libraries are not just about books, but what they do for and with people.
Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, towns, schools, and campuses.
Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can meet together and connect.
Whereas libraries and librarians build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise.
Whereas libraries, which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy.
Whereas libraries promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues.
Whereas librarians and library workers partner with other civic organizations to make sure their community's needs are being met.
Whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information.
Whereas libraries are a resource for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, and socioeconomic status by offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen communities.
Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Oregon proclaims National Library Week, April 7th through the 13th, 2019. All residents are encouraged to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian because you, libraries transform.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item G, review of library's 2018 annual report.
I just, I won't go through this page by page or anything, but I will entertain any questions. It's just a report we're required to file with the Department of Public Instruction every year. Most of it's statistical, visits, program attendance, things like that, number of items in our collection. There are some accounting, budget numbers. Those are straight from the reports that Lisa provided. It's not really an accounting report, though. We have a specific set of instructions we need to follow, so there are some things that are slightly different because of the way the directions are worded. So it's not, you know, it shouldn't be considered an accounting report per se. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Anyone? Okay, we see this every year. Okay, item K, review of building permits, impact fees, and investments. It's informational and open for any questions that trustees may have. Anything, anyone? Okay, item L, discussion of possible action, 2018 budget amendment number six. Recommended motion is to approve that budget amendment. Need motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions here? Getting things in the right account, right, Lisa?
What?
Gets things in the right account?
Um, yes, it's, yeah, it's making budget amendments, like, for instance, the first one, the police department, their operations. It's higher because of some of the grants they received to offset that expense, so it's increasing the revenue and increasing that expense line, so it's more in line with what actually is happening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item M, update regarding possibly lowering Wolf Street, Dane County Highway MM speed limit and Dane County's response.
And basically, this is coming from the Deputy Highway Commissioner Pam Dunphy to Jeff, saying that they will, once the county passes the order, they will change the speed limit within the village limit, and then they'll do a study to determine if they should do it outside the village. Basically, that's kind of summarizing it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
By study, you mean they're going to come out and do a traffic comp?
Whatever the county's going to do, yeah, I mean, typically they do that, or they put that counter across the road, Jerry, I'm not really sure.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think that's what they mean, or she means, sorry.
Okay. Just making sure what she meant by a study.
Yeah.
Other questions? We'll go to item N, discussion of possible action about the South Standpipe Repaint Project. Recommended motion is to award the South Standpipe Repaint Project to Badges Specialty Coatings LLC of Jamesville, Wisconsin, the amount of $102,900.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. We've talked about this in the past, too, I think. Any questions on this? This is inside the water tower, right?
Yep.
So I assume that the, the concern that was addressed in the memo about looking at the company and making sure they're reliable, that was taken care of?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Good.
Anything else? So we have motion second to approve the South Standpipe Repainting Project, the amount of $102,900. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Okay, item O, discussion of possible action regarding fiduciary, 2019 parade of homes prod, 2019 parade of homes road closure request. road closure request. Recommended motion is to approve the request by fiduciary for the temporary closure of Brynhill Drive during the operating hours of 2019 parade of homes as outlined in the email dated March eighth, 2019. Fiduciary in the parade of homes is responsible for all barricades and signage.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Chief, you're all okay with this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion curious. Item P, there's some press releases. One, sandbags and sand is available for village residents, and the village's fireworks department closed West Netherwood Road on Friday, March fifteenth, due to flooding. Is that still closed?
Yeah, I'm gonna say a few things. So, I talked, so Gary, Gary and I have been talking about this a couple times today. When you're at the intersection of Cusick Parkway and Netherwood, you cannot see the water, so maybe people are thinking the water's gone. It is not. I actually walked up there yesterday, and it, you can actually hear it as you're getting through the park. They have now completely blocked the road because even though some of the water has receded, they, they need to rebuild the road. The shoulder's gone on the south side, and somebody actually could drive in there and damage the road, so it's, it is closed off. And it may be closed for the rest of the week, to be honest with you. It's in bad shape. They, they do have a pump, and they're trying to pump it out to try to stop the water, but Gary drove up to look at where we opened the bike trail last fall, and it's, it's like ten times as wide now, the water coming over the bike trail. So, it's gonna be a while before the road's open, most likely.
Yeah.
And then, and then we have to wait for the road, for the water to recede, for it to dry, and then we need to fix the shoulder, particularly on the south side of the road. So, people are gonna be patient, and they should be not driving through there. It is, it is blocked off for safety reasons.
Is Cusick Parkway still, have water going over?
Um, Gary, I didn't go there today, but Gary said they had, they had receded somewhat.
Okay. I was there today. It's not, it's pretty, it's not going over the road.
Okay. That's good.
So, where's the water that's coming across Netherwood? Is that coming from?
Lake Barney. It's all Lake Barney.
All Lake Barney?
Well, how much of that would you attribute to snowmelt?
Oh, that's, I mean, it's the Lake Barney. The Lake Barney area is, is at capacity, beyond capacity. So, it's no melt, but it, it's coming from the Lake Barney area, the kettle.
So, the lake's running, like, draining down that way?
Yep.
Yeah, it's that same water that floods our bike trail that's running back through town, not a bit.
There was, when Jeff and I drove out there last Friday morning, it was coming a little bit from the DLC property. I think that's gone now. It's strictly just coming out from that, that low area that we took out, but it's way wider than that than we, than it was back in the fall. And Gary's point was that there's a lot of water to be released yet, so it, it could be a while.
No, is it, is town road or village road?
It's split.
Split. So, when you say there's gotta be repairs, it'll have to be a joint cost, then?
I, I think it's mainly gonna be on the south side of the road, to be honest with you, where the water, if it's been up there, not, we walked up there, but it's actually blown about the south side of the shoulder away.
So, it'll be a village expense?
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
So, can I inquire, I'm, I think the water has also receded where it was flowing across Netherwood by the Highlands of Netherwood. It, it was flowing north to south across there for a while. I know, 'cause I saw it.
Well, I think that, that may have been the first day.
That, that was the first day, but I-
I drove up there with Jeff, and that was gone.
So, that's gone? Okay. And the road seems okay? All right.
Yep. And, and Gary, to his credit, has been keeping the Keller sister apprised of what's going on, so we'll visit in the farmhouse there. Yeah. Gary, you're asking, that's a great question. I mean, it's, we blocked the road off. We're, we're maintaining it. And I, I agree. It's, it's, it's a, I mean, we already paid a couple years ago, you know, we, you know.
But the, anyway, the township is in the loop on this, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Jeff sent Denise the, the press release on Friday.
Good.
Yep. But I, again, I would ask people not to drive through there, for their own safety, to be honest with you. It, it's not good to be driving through, even where it looks like the water's gone down a little bit. The road's in bad shape. And plus, the police, you there, Brian? A good ticket, right?
And we have issued twelve already, so, and that's not even probably a third of them or less that come through there. People just think it's a suggestion not to go through, apparently.
That's what somebody said, yeah.
Is there, what kind of warning signs are there? Is that?
It's, it's all posted. It says road closed. There's barricades that go across.
There's barricades.
So, they gotta actually drive around the barricades to get to it, so.
So, and Jeff put the, on the sign up on Friday morning, or maybe Thursday night, at the intersection of Alpine Parkway and CC, warning people that there was a road closed ahead.
Is that, I'm just wondering to try to stop that. Can, can we put something on the information page, Oregon, or on the village webpage that states why it's closed to tell people that the road is-
It's on, it's on our social media pages, so.
It's on the village website homepage.
Okay. All right. Good. Good.
We've got people asking when it's gonna be reopened, and yeah.
So, I will, I will tell you, when I talked to Gary about this, and Jeff and I talked about this on Friday afternoon, we, we thought the road was gonna be open tomorrow, because we thought, oh, it's gonna recede. It's just, I was, I was shocked how much water was still coming over the road yesterday. I, I was, it looked like it was still Friday morning, so. He's telling you, there's a lot of water to come out of Lake Barney area, so it's, people are gonna be patient, unfortunately. Sorry.
And people don't understand, I mean, there's probably only, I don't know, three or four inches that are coming across, and that's not the issue. The issue is the road safety and integrity of the road, so.
Right.
If we get to the point of having to rebuild the road, would we consider an engineering study to look at a culvert in that area for the future?
I mean, the grid, I mean, the thing that's good that came out of this, I was driving around with Jeff, and said, you know, maybe at some point that property will be in the village, you know, long, long term. And this is sort of telling us probably where we're gonna have to have the drainage swale and detention ponds, because as the weather changes, we go through these wet periods, we're gonna have to be able to do something. But yeah, we'll have to look at that, yeah. But it could be a while.
Yeah. Any other thing else? Comments or questions on this item?
And that, just to be clear, in my mind, when we, because Jeff would, would right now have his map up, and we'd all be looking at the colors, would that be the original path of the, of the flowage into the Badfish Creek as it would come across that farm field and then down into Alpine and then over to Lerner? This is new?
The, the way the water typically flows, it, it leaves the, it's been, well, since last fall, Jeff, it's been, or Alpine Dairy property, it gets to the corner of Cusick and, well, basically Cusick and Netherwood, and there's a culvert that goes underneath Cusick Parkway. It goes into that detention pond.
Okay.
And then that, that goes to the east. It comes back under Netherwood.
Yep.
And wiggles its way through Lerner Park.
Got it.
So, what Jeff and I are gonna come forward, you know, we're, we're gonna be working, oh, thanks, Brian.
I was, like, challenged, apparently.
You're not as good as Jeff, but that's okay.
If Jeff was here.
Here it is.
Okay. Nice job.
Nice job, Jeff.
We've had at least an initial discussion with the Rotary Club. We're gonna be coming back with the Lerner Park master plan, because we, we wanna improve the flow through Lerner Park and maybe even do some detention there. But Gary, Gary had a good comment on Friday, and it was the same comment that was in the paper on Saturday, that this type of snowmelt, you're seeing water that you typically don't see even during a heavy rainstorm. I mean, I mean, last year, I thought this road was gonna overflow. I mean, I don't know if you drove out there last year, but it, it, it has now, but this is not a natural way for the water to flow. It's supposed to be going east underneath Cusick into detention ponds and then, and then across, and then it comes back under Netherwood. But the reason why our bike trail that's, that's east of the, the ponds on Cusick Parkway, and actually it's the other way, Brian, that's okay, has been, has been flooded as well, is that as the water's leaving Lake Barney, going through the property, coming underneath Cusick, and it just, the ponds are just full, and it's, it's over, it's basically splashing out of the bike trail. But the part, the fact that the bike trail along Cusick Parkway, part of it's underwater, I mean, that's, that's unbelievable. I was shocked when I saw that Friday morning, so.
Well, this field here's always got water.
Yep. And last year, it came very close to topping, yeah. And Jeff could do a better job explaining all this, but typically, that's not the way the water's supposed to be flowing, Jeff.
Just a reminder, then, as we look at future projects in the village, that maybe whatever the requirements are for 500-year floods and all that, maybe we need to step it up and-
We are restricted by the state.
Is, really?
Yeah.
We can't be any stricter on the-
Pardon me.
Based on-
It's, it's complicated. There are, we're preempted for sure when it comes to water quality-related considerations. With respect to quantity and stormwater management from a flooding standpoint, we have more flexibility. So, we did do a comprehensive, well, we did update our stormwater management ordinances even a couple years ago.
Yeah.
Didn't we have Vanessa help us with that? So, I think, I mean, we can review them, but my sense is that the village has been as-
We pushed the-
As, we pushed the envelope as much as we can in our ordinances.
Right.
We believe from a, from a flooding and stormwater management standpoint.
Okay.
And they have been comprehensively reviewed in the not-too-distant past.
Yeah.
All right. Then, good job. Just do the best we can.
Anything else on this item? Go to item Q, Pelletary's press release about curbside recycling. That press release talks about proper preparation of recyclables that do not fit in the recycling cart.
So, it's-
On the website and the emails.
Yeah, this is the Amazon effect, that there's a lot more cardboard, and they're asking people that they need to fit in the bags and not just bundled or placed in their bigger box. They're, they're not gonna pick them up anymore.
Yeah. They'll put a sticker on the recycle bin to let people know if they haven't followed the proper procedure, so. That'll make some people unhappy, I would guess. Any questions on that? Item R, park board chair, Rich Strominger, is resigning from the park board. We thank Rich for his twelve years of service to the village and wish him well.
Yep.
Done a nice job of the park board.
He did. He has done a good job.
Including cheering it for a few years. Item S, discussion possible action about hiring a permanent substitute part-time crossing guard position, and the recommended motion is to hire Kim Wisden, a permanent substitute part-time crossing guard position at the hourly rate of fourteen dollars and four cents.
I'll move that.
Second.
Thank you.
Never have too many crossing guard options, so.
It's a note there from Rudy. So, any questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Item T, review of police department's 2018 annual report.
Uh, yeah. So, I, I won't go through this, all of it. We try to continue to approve upon this every year. I, I'd like to thank Rudy Trace, Jenny Pegenkoff, Chad Schaub. They did the bulk of this, and I think they did a really good job. As I noted in my message, I think Oregon is a fantastic place to, to live and work and play. We were third in Wisconsin for safest city, and in 2019, they've already ranked us second. So, we're doing something right, and I'd like to thank everyone involved, including the residents, to make that possible, so. Other than that, I'm looking forward to the RMS system that we have. You know, it's only about a year old now, so, once we get more data into that, we'll be able to do some comparisons and how things are, are going year after year. It's kind of hard to do that with the old Madison LARM system now, so, as you can see through here, it does highlight some of the stuff in the back on crimes that have occurred in 2018. And we also highlight the, the wonderful things that the police department does in the community with the safety camps and National Night Out and, and our award ceremony. So, I will be happy to entertain any questions, but I think it was a fantastic report.
It was very nicely done, Jeff. Yeah, very thorough. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. First, let me say, outstanding job. These questions are, should in no way reflect poorly upon whoever made the report or anything. They're more clarification, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So, on, on page thirteen, there's a graph of the property room, the approximate amount of property that, that is seized. Is, is that like item numbers?
Yeah, that's a, that's a count of property that we take in, whether it's seized property, whether it's found property, anything that we tag as property.
But the, but it's like by item number? That's like, or, uh, number of seizures or like-
Number of items.
Items. Okay. Okay. And then, any idea why that went up in 2018? It's kind of a jump there by like twelve, thirteen hundred, twelve hundred?
Not without getting into specifics of exactly what it was. I have no, I didn't get into the intricate details of how many items was there.
That was kind of just a wondering thing.
Could be five hundred more bikes we found. It's hard to say.
Yeah. Well, you know, and, yeah, that makes sense. And then, okay, one more chart, just 'cause I'm the editor. Page sixteen.
Amanda, could I just, on that chart you were just asking about?
Yeah.
Just a follow-up question, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, chief, but, so is this a cumulative total, or is this, were two thousand items seized in two thousand or in 2018?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have over ten thousand items in property right now.
So, that's just the number of pieces of evidence that were-
It's not necessarily evidence. It's everything that we take in. It could be found property, for example. It could be included in that count.
So, this isn't just the evidence room? This is evidence room plus-
It's all property that we take in.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
Sorry?
Oh, that's fine.
Other questions?
Yeah. Bottom of page sixteen, there's a, there's a pie chart where it talks about all the different trainings, and, and it looks like the color start, you know, at the noon position as you go around clockwise, and then there's a couple of slivers of twenty-four hours and eleven hours that don't have anything in the legend. I didn't know what, if you knew what those were for. It's, I don't know if it got cut off.
Which one are you supposed, what are you, what are you referring to?
So, so like the dark blue upper right is in-service training, and then the next one clockwise is leadership training. And if you follow that all the way around the pie wheel, uh, to like, there's a little tiny sliver for eight that's orange, which is, corresponds to evidence. And then, all, when you're getting back up to noon, there's a sliver for twenty-four and eleven that don't have anything in the key for those items. I don't know if it got cut off or-
I don't know what those are specifically. This is all training items, so I would not, without going through and looking at the actual Excel spreadsheet, I couldn't tell you what it was, quite honestly.
Okay.
Just know that it's all different types of trainings that we send people to.
All right. Just, that's, uh-
I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah. I'm surprised it's not over in the legend, though, so.
Maybe it could just be added.
I can certainly find that out for you, though.
Yeah, I don't know. Just for, yeah, sorry. It's just the, you know, I was trying to, I'm trying to understand how time is spent and absorb the report, 'cause I read all of it, and it is fantastic. It's very comprehensive, and I appreciate that. I just thought I'd point it out to someone so it doesn't happen next year. I don't know. I'm not worried about what they are.
Yeah, I would imagine that it just, for some reason, the Excel document that does this didn't include it. For whatever reason, it didn't get caught. That's what it is. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? Anyone? Okay. We'll go to item, anything else on the report, chief, that you want to mention?
That is it.
Okay. Item U, discussion possible action regarding review of the following police department policies by Chief Yule and possible board action. Recommended motion is to approve the police department policies, and we did receive this earlier by email, so we'd have time to read them. So, need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. You're on again, chief.
Okay. As in, like what you did last time, Randy, I'm sure you use this to, your bedtime material?
Mm-hmm. It works well.
Works well. I won't go through each one of these policies, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Again, this is all accreditation-related information. Not a whole lot is new. I mean, it talks about classifications and legal advice. Obviously, we, here, we do that. This is just a document letting us know how we do that. The LPR systems are, are new, so there's a standard operating procedure for that.
Can I ask a question about, about those?
Yeah.
I, I know we already approved them. I'm wondering, do you know how often the WIS DOTs, like, updates information into those hot lists?
Daily. So-
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I, my, my only, so here was just my thinking. If somebody's registration runs out, 'cause they didn't renew it in time, and they remember a week later, is, is, I just, seems to me like, I don't, I would hate to have your department tied up with, like, small, I mean-
I mean, as in, like, if you've got, if you're talking about expired registration, for example, there's always, for us, there's discretion involved in that. There's always a curve that we have, but we don't expect people to renew it the day of. Those things happen. We always allow a little leeway for that. But it's going to pop up on the LPR system that you're talking about, and then it's up to the officer, okay, I've got an expired registration of a week. Do I want to deal with that or not? Because that's no different than they do now.
Okay. And the, the, the readers that are in the, the units, are they fixed so that it always points, like, out the front of the vehicle? Because-
Yeah. Well, I, when, so, when we get it installed, we already have it. We're just waiting for Madison to get their equipment working so we can connect to them. So, it's basically four cameras, and it's mount, they're mounted on top of the car.
Oh, interesting.
So, yeah, they're, they're fixed to see all different angles.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
Cool. How's it?
Anyone else? Okay. So, we have motion second to approve these policies. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion curious.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more set, Jenna.
Yeah.
What you keep saying.
I'm, I'm promising you.
For now.
For now. Yeah.
For now, yeah, right.
Till you fix the chart.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Item ten is reported committees. Item A, planning commission, March seventh, 2019 meeting. Trustee Carpenter, please.
Yep. So, we have one item. This is the discussion of possible action regarding the approval of preliminary plat for lot one in the Highlands of Netherwood subdivision. Mike, is it okay if I just add the bullet points from this email?
Yes, please. Wasn't asked you to. Yeah. Thanks.
So, this motion is gonna be edited a little bit from the planning commission based on further means that we've had with applicant. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the recommendation to the village board of the preliminary plat for lot one, Highlands of Netherwood subdivision contingent on the following. Comments in the planner's memorandum, and then according to the memo that we have at our desks, I'm gonna add that access on the shared drive to Netherwood is gonna have a grasscrete paper system. Second, two bollards and a chain link will be incorporated to limit access to Netherwood. The shared drive will be widened to twenty feet of pavement with eighteen feet of driveway and two feet of gutter. The berm will be reduced or eliminated to maintain twenty-six feet clearance for fire across the shared driveway. And then I'll also add contingent on comments in the engineer's memorandum. And I think, I guess I'll add, access restrictions should be indicated along Peterson Drive.
Great.
Longest motion ever.
Yeah. We need a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you.
And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Did you want to make any comments?
I don't know, maybe, but it sounds like you guys got my communication from earlier today that we've been working with the fire department on the shared access drive and today that we've been working with the fire department on the shared access drive and what that's going to really look like, so that would be the only thing that I want to make sure we get, definitely got it all.
Yeah, we got that, great, thank you. So are there any questions or comments? So I'm not going to read all that again, I'm just going to ask, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. There you go. Item B, Park Board, March 6, 2019 meeting. Trustee Peterson, please.
Okay. So the first item, B1, is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Oregon Masonic Lodge and Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club donation. The Park Board recommendation, or Park Board's recommended motion, LeBrun moved, seconded by Hannibal, to recommend to Village Board the approval of the donation wheelchair accessible swings with soft rubber bases from the Oregon Masonic Lodge and Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club, noting the installation and localization will be finalized by Village staff. That motion carried six, nothing. Do we do these individual, do we have to vote?
Yeah, so I'll get a second on that, give me a second, Jeff?
Sure, thank you.
Are there questions or comments?
Happy to explain if anybody wants to.
Now, there's good pictures in our packet, that looks like a nice, a nice option.
Sure.
Okay, so we have that, motion second about wheelchair accessible swings with soft rubber bases, joint project Oregon Masonic Lodge and Oregon Brooklyn Optimist Club. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Item two, please, Amanda.
Yep. So Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Review of Pond Hockey and Recreational Immunity Legal Opinion. Please note Staff's recommendation is to prohibit rinks with sideboards to be constructed in stormwater areas. The Park Board's recommended motion, Miller moved, seconded by Hannibal, to recommend to Village Board prohibiting hockey rinks with sideboards to be constructed in stormwater areas. The motion carried six, nothing.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, sir? And there was a memo and stuff from Matt there, too, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries.
And then third, item three here is Discussion and Possible Recommendation to the Village Board Regarding Introducing Park Improvement Impact Fee and Review of Park Impact Fee and Land Dedication Policy Needs Assessment Document. The Park Board's recommended motion, Miller moved, seconded by Clues, to recommend to Village Board to adopt the recommendations related to impact fees provided in Park Impact Fee and Land Dedication Policy Needs Assessment Document. Motion carried six, nothing.
Second. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments here?
The lower from Matt's office prepared the needs assessment, and we're publishing the hearing notice, and this will all come back to the Village Board on April 15.
Okay.
For a hearing.
Okay. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thanks, Amanda. Item 11, Minutes Not Requiring Action From the February 13, 2019 Library Board Meeting. Those are in our packet for people wanting online, would like to see those. Item 12, Unfinished Business, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons at Oregon Middle School. Recommended motion is to approve the purchase and installation of one complete RRFB unit for Pleasant Oak Drive to be installed at the existing Oregon Middle School crosswalk, planning to be for 2019 borrowing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, sir?
So this was a table for a few meetings, and then we had a good discussion with Dr. Busler and Andy Wyland about this, I guess last week or two weeks ago, and we got this straight away.
Okay, good.
Is this going to affect the, the results of the study from?
It will be part of the study.
Okay.
And if, if we determine, you know, it's something that Jeff said, if we have to move it at some point, we can move it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mentioned at the last meeting that there are those beacon signs, as well as speed limit signs with the arm out over the road, that I think are very effective. It might be worth asking Strand about that going forward.
We-
That's the possibility of that.
We could, and I know Jeff doesn't think that's the spot for it.
Yeah.
He thinks it's more like when we do it for the crossing for the new library, that would be more appropriate in there, but if you wanted, can ask him again.
Yeah, yeah, sure. One amount will make a difference, so.
We'll still listen to you, Steve.
Yeah, we are, I'm sure. So any questions or comments, sir? Okay, so the motion's second to approve the purchase and installation of the RRFB unit for Pleasant Oak Drive to install at Oregon Middle School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Item 13, New Business, Approve of Pending New Operator Licenses, approved by the Police Department at the Stop and Go, Geraldine Dobbinson at Quick Trip 302, Devon Fitzgerald.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. So that takes us back to the front.
Yep.
So we are at item four, Village Attorney and Village Administrator. Item A, Discussion Possible Action. First Amendment to Agreements for Land Division Improvements to Bergamot Development in the Village of Oregon, Phases 4D and 4E, Delay Installation to the Final Lift of the Street Pavement. The recommended motion is to approve the First Amendment to the agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So this amendment gives the developer until August of 2020 to put the final asphalt lift down on the streets in Phases 4D and 4E. I think otherwise, they would have been required to get that done this year, and I guess Mike maybe knows more of the background on why this is being requested.
Because there's still so much construction traffic in the area, so when we received this, Jeff and I thought this is actually a really good idea to delay the, the street paving.
So we, we protect the streets by putting that final asphalt lift down later after construction is closer to being done?
Yep. Any questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Item B, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Ordinance Relating to Electronic Smoking Devices and Providing Tobacco Products to Minors. This should be the second reading and adoption, the recommended motion, waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 19-01.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, sir?
So just so you know, this went through a couple of drafts since the last meeting, and Randy, Ryan did okay this from the Alliance, the Alliance, or the term is.
I think the last change was to change from the word product to the word substance, trying to define the kind of things that might be used in these devices, and substance was something that Randy thought was a, a better word than product, I actually agree with him, so we put, we changed that.
Do you have any feedback from the school district? Are they aware of it?
Yes, I gave a copy of this to Dr. Busler and that.
Okay.
Anything else? So we have the motion second to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 19-01. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Item C, Continued Discussion Regarding New TIC campus plan and tax increment financing, TIP request and possible action, and that's tabled until the April 18 board meeting?
Eighth.
I'm sorry, eighth?
Eighth, yeah.
Getting too eager here. Item two, Discussion Possible Board Action, authorize Village staff to submit a completed Board of Commissioners Public Land Worksheet Loan Application for a $1 million state trust fund loan for the project. Possible Board Action, authorize Village staff to submit a completed Board of Commissioners Public Land Worksheet Loan Application for a $1 million state trust fund loan for the project and bring required state resolution to the April 8 board meeting.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
This is part of the process, the board asked to, let Peggy have the authority to ask for the, the application, and we fill it out, and we bring it back to the board.
It's the process, exactly.
Okay. Jerry?
Yes, how did we arrive at the million dollar number?
That's what the, so the TIC proposal is for the TIP funding to be, 10% of the total project cost up to a cap of a million dollars.
Okay, so that's, okay.
And so it's a million dollars is what we're borrowing, subject to a look back after construction, we'll true it up and see if it was really a million dollars.
So we're anticipating the maximum?
We, we kind of have to, because we, that's what the project budget is based on.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so we have the motion second to authorize Village staff to submit a completed Board of Commissioners Public Land Worksheet Loan Application for a $1 million state trust fund loan for the project and bring that required state resolution to the April 8 board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Nay.
Six, one, that motion carries, thank you. Now, that takes us back to the last page, right?